Please come to the water. Oh, second. Two thousand and twenty-three. Ready for anything else?
Allen?
Here.
Allen?
Anderson?
Here.
Abadizian?
Here.
Fazana? Hule? He Bush?
Here.
Curry? DeSai?
Here.
Drake?
Here.
Gale?
Gardeau?
Here.
Gentha?
Here.
Ely? Hoffman?
Here.
Hohein?
Here.
Holloway?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lechance? Lester?
Here.
Lewis? Magnet?
Mandig?
Here.
Maniscalco? Kang?
Here.
Patel? Petosky?
Here.
Salami?
Here.
Stubber?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Torres?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Carrier? We have a form.
It's named for the allegiance. Allegiance to the father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the history of the world. I have number four. The meeting minutes of September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three is your motion.
Number?
I agree. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, always in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Five. Public comments relative to agenda items? Six. The non-Christmas events regarding annual independent consumer advocate meeting on October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at five thirty PM, at District Headquarters, five o'clock by Main Street.
Joe Shereko? Let me ask you. Joe?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the public, commissioners, staff, Attorney Joseph Shereko, independent consumer advocate. I just want to add, this is, to my knowledge, the first time that the forum will be held at the district headquarters as opposed to the training center. So looking forward to hopefully good turnout. And as a reminder, you know, not only our commissioner's staff welcome to attend, but of course, any members of the public. And if anyone has items that they would like to discuss and they want to give me some kind of advance notice, feel free to email me, mdcconsumeradvocate@e-mail.com. And it will also be, you know, on video via WebEx. So looking forward to it. Thanks.
I am seven. Report from the district chairman. Eight, report from chief executive office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try and read what we're going to say earlier.
I'm just going to summarize some correspondence I've sent to the commissioners. I'm not going to go into detail. You've already seen them. So I just want to remind everybody that I sent out an email on the twenty-second talking about all the things we're trying to do with our procurement, with our North Hartford projects and our thirty percent goal of Hartford-based residents. I understand, we understand, that if we can't meet that goal with Hartford residents, we will look outside of Hartford to make sure that we will comply with the spirit of that concern. We're very successful so far. However, yes, a lot of the jobs that we're getting with our contractors is flagging, but it's a start for introducing Hartford residents into the workforce at the MDC with our contractors. We are struggling with, and my email mentions and talks about, you know, struggling to get Hartford-based contractors to do the, we call house connection projects, which are from. Still remain to the home, but we're working hard to get people qualified to do that work. And even rebid the work at a request of one of our contractors. Number two is, I also sent out an email Friday, since new my day, I can hit the emails. Friday, the twenty-ninth, talking about the, I know some of the questions that was posed by the commissioners, Torres and Holloway and the public, you know, what short-term, long-term things can we do to mitigate street flooding? One of the things I was waiting for and did receive and sent out was the CDM interim report for the drainage study for Blue Hills Granby areas. Now remember, Blue Hills Granby areas is all going to get separated, but because we need to understand how to size the pipes and where the pipes need to go, and then once we understand how that infrastructure is going to look on every street, we then need to have an outfall location into the north branch of the Park River. And we've got two issues in the north branch of the Park River, its existing capacity and the need for dredging. And all those details will be finalized once we get into the final study. Then we can determine, you know, we don't even know, good question from commissioners, we don't know if the river's ever been dredged in its history. We don't know the city of Hartford, state of Connecticut, the MDC, who, if anybody was involved in that process. We're going to be working through that process during the study to determine what is necessary. I've said this before, it's really important, we do not want to have to build a pump station to force the water into the river. When we separate this water from the Clean Water Project drainage areas in North Hartford, we don't want to pump it in. There's other issues outside of our separation areas that are localized flooding in the Weaver area, Weaver High School, from the stream coming from Bloomfield. There's lots of localized flooding issues that have nothing to do with MDC system. So we're trying to solve all these problems together as part of the drainage study. This communication that I'm about to talk about, and I think we have slides for it, Julie, I don't know what the order is, but this is like probably, remember, I mentioned this before, we were planning on doing forty-seven million dollars in this area of Hartford over ten years and now it's at one eighty. So we have, we're running chewing gum at the same time trying to achieve our goal. We are achieving our goal. We did start work, but you might have seen this press release out on Friday, Nick sent out. And this topic is the, as you remember, we've never, DEEP and EPA have never allowed the funding of private property work. It's always been big tunnels, you know, separating the street, but they never funded the separation and the provision of providing relining laterals, replacing laterals. As you know, the board approved in an ordinance that all laterals will be free. So now we have committed to DEEP and that we believe removing some more from its location where it's entering the system, which is the home. Which is the street, let's remove the storm water rather than collect it at the river. So we have committed as part of this pilot, and DEEP has agreed, they'll give us fifty percent grant for all that private property work, which is a billion dollars. And as long as we can achieve thirty percent reduction in INI, we call INI, inflow and infiltration. Inflow is somebody pumping stormwater. Into their, from their basement. And infiltration is just a leaking pipe. So our goal is to remove thirty percent. Under the original consent orders, it was ten percent. So we're saying, listen, we did pilots in Weatherfield and West Hartford, we know we can get to thirty percent by doing this lateral work. So they agreed, they gave us the grant money, and the goal is, if we can achieve that, they will consider that pilot for other areas within Hartford and our other seven towns, which means a lot of grant money that we were going to have to pay for ourselves. And we've allowed this program to afford the ability to pay for everybody's lateral for free. So this communication is important. Press release, and the next one. This is really a flyer, a door knocker flyer. Our outreach teams, Crane Moody and Jen Fleming and our own staff, we go out and we're trying to make sure that everybody understands how important it is. Our contract is out there, ready to go, they're going to start in the Tower Avenue area on August eighth, and we need a hundred percent participation. We don't need fifty, we don't need sixty, we need a hundred in order to get to that thirty percent INI removal. So we need the homeowners to understand that we have a free lateral program, but this program is a little different because the contractor is there today, knocked it on your door, and they're ready to go. And lining contractors aren't like a dime a dozen. It's not like there's a lot of people that do this work. So when we're there on your street, we want to get a hundred percent participation, and we want to be able to line every lateral, because if we have to come back. One thing that Crane Moody and Jennifer and even Jeff King had said is, the one biggest complaint in two thousand and eight, two thousand and thirteen with all the separation work in Hartford was, my lawn was a mess for three years. And so what we're trying to focus on this flyer is, this is non-invasive. We're lining from the street, we're not digging up your lawn. But if we, if we don't get this done with this contractor today, and he has to, we have to come back at some later date, most likely the option would be to dig up your lawn and replace your lateral. So we're trying to avoid that. We want to keep our contractor going. We don't want our contractor to say, okay, I'm leaving this street and I'll come back later, because they're not going to do it under contract. So we've identified the streets. The most important part of this communication is that, you know, everybody's got to understand that this is a free, you're, if you have to replace your lateral by yourself, as we said before, it's about ten, up to ten thousand dollars. That's what the city, oh, sorry, that's what the MDC ordinance says. You're saving ten thousand dollars. The contractor's here, ready to go. We need everybody to push this narrative and make sure that everybody understands it's free and it's good for their home. Also, we've got Jamie and Jeff King are working out, we've talked a lot about looking for other avenues for education and looking for, I don't know if, did we can this out?
We can't.
Oh, we can't print it. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just got this like literally fifteen minutes ago. But this is a program that we've been talking about, Jeff Cap Cart with the, with the Print Stack and the other technical high schools, finding a way to develop a program. I know Commissioner Torres, we talked a lot about, you know, being creative, how do we be creative and find a way to increase the capacity of not just employee, young people that want to work for the MDC, but also want to work for contractors for the MDC. And this is a program that we're looking to, almost like an internship. Last year, we actually had a young man, minority black male from West Hartford, who was in our Learn to Earn program, and he was very interested in becoming a water treatment operator. We had him working all throughout the year, one day a week kind of thing, just, and then he decided to go to college. So this is that kind of program where we could try and develop a program for, we're looking for kids that are in the technical schools, that are already in an apprentice program or in the program with the unions relative to DOT's program, that are interested in an apprenticeship type program on skilled labor. So you'll get a copy of that. And then I do apologize, but Commissioners Torres and Holloway, I promised you I'd have the letter tonight. I got the letter tonight. I received a letter, dated July nineteenth, from the commissioners I just mentioned, and I finally completed it. It is, as usual, twenty-three pages long. There are a bunch of graphs. I was again waiting for the interim drainage study from CDM as part of my excuse why I'm late and didn't answer you, but it is on open text. You have a hard copy, and it was emailed. So if there's any questions or concerns, Commissioner Torres and Commissioner Holloway, please let me know, and I'll address those. Then we have number six, which was, this is really, really important. Both the Water Bureau and the Board of Finance have been involved in this. We are planning to talk extensively about the invitation to the towns regarding the Water Master Plan, the Royal Water Master Plan, you know, as much as six hundred million dollars worth of work, three hundred, at least three hundred and eleven million dollars over the course of the next twenty years. So this is a very, very important, it's not a want, it's a need. The infrastructure at West Hartford Filter is over a hundred and some odd years old, and we need to start thinking about this. We presented, I've asked Bob Barron, we presented this to Water Bureau and the Board of Finance, and we have, we're looking to establish a rate stabilization fund that would be similar to the Clean Water Project, which would help us utilize funds that we, excess revenues on the water side that we could, that we could put into this rate stabilization fund. Commissioner Salami did write a letter to our towns on September twenty-seventh. I hope everybody got a copy of it. It's a great letter that kind of summarizes where we are today. Lisa Remsen, who's our manager of finance, sorry, manager of budget, thirty-three years, just retired last week, and it was, it's a great send-off for her because we're presenting a second year in a row, zero percent increase in our alarm and zero percent increase in the water rate. We will be talking about developing that rate stabilization fund with excess revenues from this year for the water rate, about eleven cents or about two million bucks. So that's a lot, that's a big discussion. We've got to get our towns involved, and we'll be talking about that really throughout all of two thousand and twenty-four. And then that's it. We're made, oh, sorry, one more, very important. The simplest things are very important. So I had a meeting with Janice Castle from the city of Hartford, and we're talking about a lot of things. And one thing that we're going to be doing is we call house assessment. So we go into a home, and we're, so we're determining, you know, if you're either a backwater valve candidate, you know, here's what we need to do for a backwater valve. A backwater valve program is voluntary, right? So if you are not part of these project areas and you want a backwater valve, you can choose not to get it. In some cases, we have to destroy or rip up your basement on a backwater valve program because voluntary, some people choose not to do it. And we do what we can do, sub pump, sub pump, upflow toilets, there's a lot of things we can do to protect the home the best we can without destroying the home. On the Clean Water Project, any of these homes along this North Hartford area, we need to get thirty percent INI removal. That's a requirement. So the backwater valve program is not voluntary, it's mandatory, you have to do it. And therefore, we can't ask homeowners to allow us to come into their basement and rip up their basement and then say, we're going to leave you with a ripped up basement. So we have to replace in kind what that basement looks like. As part of that assessment, we want to make sure that not only the sewer pipe going to the home is in good shape, we don't want to put in a backwater valve at a sub pump, and then your lateral is collapsing. We want to make sure it's in good shape, so we TV the lateral as well. Same thing with the gutter. If we rely on the gutter system on your home to be operational so that the gutter is full of leaves, right? I mean, it's a simple, simple thing. So Janet Castle said, if you want to give anybody something, give them something they really can use, which is leak bags. So every homeowner is going to get Home Depot Special, five bags, and the intent of this is that you need to check your gutters, you need to clean your leaves, your gutters, and this is what's for. And every gutter leak that comes out of that gutter is going to protect the home and is going to protect that from clogging and catch basing upon this. So that's the goal, and we'll continue this. We are going to be supporting a ice cream truck around Halloween in the project areas as part of our outreach for our project site areas between three and five o'clock on Halloween. Want to stay in the daylight so that we don't, you know, it's safe, and that's my report.
Sorry, Jim. Scott, just a couple of, two quick questions. Anyone had a chance to reel this CDM? Real quick, out there. On the North Branch, Hartford, obviously, there is a lot of wood, a lot of down trees that are causing issues. Has, if you don't know, the commissioners from Hartford, has anything been done to clean this up? And my understanding is there's been some work done, something like somewhere around a hundred thousand. Not necessarily in this area right here, looking true.
Yeah, so the report mentions that, and it's areas surrounding really the Scarborough area. The goal is to do exactly what was happened there. As you can imagine, down trees just act like a dam, and they, and they back up the water, and the water level rises, and then the homes that are adjacent to that flood zone, that flood plain of the river itself, again, this is independent of MDC sewer system. This is just the river flooding my alma mater, University of Hartford. I mean, years ago, all the cars in the parking lot were flooded, right? If everyone remembers that back in fifteen years ago, whatever it was. So that is just it, exactly what we're talking about. The simple things of removing those trees, it's got to be done anyways. So one of the questions in the letter that I answered was short-term solutions. That's a short-term solution, though trees have got to be removed anyways. I'm talking about trees that are down, not, there might be some issues on the banks, but removing the trees that are already down is a simple, easy way to solve some interim flooding issues.
And just a second question. The, your staff, the owner was down right before a major rainstorm, blowing out, taking anywhere from thirty-five, forty pictures of drains that have not been cleaned. Is this a group at all, or it doesn't look like it to me? What? You know, I'm just looking at pictures, so it just seems that there's a lot of stuff that needs to be cleaned that's not happening, and I don't know, I'm assuming Hartford is responsible or responsible.
Yeah, so, you know, we've talked a lot about this, and the thing that I can tell you is, and I say this in my report, you know, cleaning the streets does help. It's not the solution, but it mitigates the impact, right? And if you, I simply look at facts. The facts are, in two thousand, August nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, we had a two-hundred-and-forty-year rainstorm, rainstorm, and we had three feet of water in Albany Avenue, okay? And we went through hell and back with the city of Hartford regarding cleaning the streets. The streets in Albany Avenue are relatively clean now, the city's doing a great job there. In all of this year, except for the church on Albany and Woodland, thank you, Commissioner, we didn't have the same street flooding, and it was because the streets are able to drain. It takes a while, but the storms that we had this year were a hundred and fifty-year storms, they weren't a two-hundred-and-forty-four-year storm, but they were a hundred and fifty-year storms, and so it does help. And our goal is to make sure that we don't want to have, unfortunately, MDC is protecting us up. We don't want to be having street flooding and then say, what came first, the chicken and the egg? Was it the garbage, or was it the leaves, or was it, or was it the MDC sewer system? You can't really determine the size and capacity of the MDC system and how it's operated without making sure that your baseline, your baseline, your baseline is the streets got to clean. And then you can determine how much capacity does the district system have. Now Albany Avenue, with a hundred and fifty-year storm, on July fourth of two thousand and twenty-three, we had no street flooding. So, you know, that's my point.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Scott, there is a bet at Unity Plaza for Trunk or Treats, and it's been going on about seventy-eight years now. That's a large gathering of citizens and people from the neighborhood. Might be number one place to place the good ice creams, number two, to get information about what's going on in that area, so I can talk to you offline about.
Yeah, perfect, we would happen to do that. We do have, we have identified a company that has five trucks, and we've asked for two, but we'll definitely talk to you about that. It's a cheap way of showing the community that we care, and we're trying to be good stewards, and so it's a simple thing, but we're happy to talk about that.
Okay.
I'm sure he's going to, he's so happy.
Any further questions? One question?
Yes, I have a question. My name is Alma Elder, and I'm just an observer at this district council meeting, which I find very interesting. Could we request that the speakers identify themselves by name and position? It's very hard to know who is talking at what time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So no doubt. Question. The streets, when we do the laterals, we'll be coming into the street, the sewer in the street. One of the problems we've always had, no matter what we're doing in areas, is the street, we patch the street. It causes a major problem in the street going forward because of the way patching is done, and it's always one of the complaints that I hear from people. How are we going to handle that?
Yeah, so there's a couple of issues there. If it's a main city artery, which includes access to hospitals, state roads, Albany Avenue, for example, we have been, I've mentioned this at numerous BPW meetings, the standard for the city of Hartford, for a lot of good reasons, was always using a concrete road base. And one of the problems with the concrete road base is that it hides problems in the road. So, and it's intended to hide problems. The concrete road base is intended, you've got clay, clay is not a good structural fill for a road, so that's why you use concrete road base. And it basically acts as a bridge over a very poor soil. But the problem with it is, is when you start to see deterioration of either a sewer system or a water system, like what happened on Homestead Avenue, it cost us almost a million dollars to replace forty-seven odd feet of sewer pipe, and it bridges the road, you wind up with a huge void, forty feet by twenty-seven odd feet, and it's deadly dangerous, especially for a school bus to drive over. So we finally have an agreement with the insurance department, I think last year, where they agreed to allow us to use nine inches of asphalt. So basically, six and three, six class two, three inch class one, or vice versa. And so that's been very helpful. We've also, there's much better products out there, Mr. Chairman, for temporary patching materials, would use a much better quality patch, but as you're right, it's been an issue for a long time, but I don't believe that we're having those kinds of issues that we've had in the past. No, 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 it's usually like a ten-inch, no, it's usually like a ten-inch concrete, but not every street has concrete. You know, you would have a street like Sigourney that has concrete because you're using that road, a lot of the hospitals, the ambulances use certain roads to get to and from. But we did this pilot back in two thousand, it was either ten or eleven, and we actually, the intersections in Albany Avenue, State Road, the DOT allowed us to do it. And those intersections, we've used as the example to the city, as proof that this, what we're proposing is better than the concrete. The city has accepted that in the last year or so, and we're utilizing that everywhere.
I guess I'm talking about the year before the street, when we leave it.
Yep. Yeah, well, so
We have a lot of problems with that.
Yeah, so we'll, in most cases, yes, in most cases, like on Durham, we're doing the water main prior to the sewer. So we'll mill and overlay the entire road. I mean, in most cases, we're milling and overlaying the entire road. We have, as we have done in the past, everything that we got deep to agree to, it's constantly, we're learning, we're constantly learning, and we'll, from time to time, there might be something that we've learned and we want to do something additional, and we'll ask, you know, we'll bring that back to the board, but we are, we will be milling and overlaying the majority of those streets.
Further questions? If not, thank you. Very much appreciate the presentation this evening, we have three. We have three. Answering with everybody's question. Okay, item number nine, reported from District Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Spelman, District Council, just a few updates. As you know, from the last meeting, the DPH approved our abandonment permit for the Culver Reservoir, our storage area within the Culver Reservoir. We are now working towards two things. One is an application of DPHs for approval of the conservation easement that we entered into an agreement with Save the Sound in the Northwest Land Coalition for some 5,000 plus minus acres to put in the land conservation chip. Consideration for that is a million dollars, and we're working on negotiating the terms of that easement. So that's, that's in the process. Hopefully, we get that completed before the end of the year. Landfill cases are pending, two with the State Claims Commissioner. One, the oldest one is now in Superior Court. There were motions to the Smiths filed by the state, not the whole complaint, but certain counts of the complaint that's in Superior Court, we objected to those motions. This goes back on June of 2023, the judge, I'm sorry, July, the judge has 120 days for this to rule. So that data is asked upon us, and hopefully be able to report at the November meeting the results of those motions. They're just a motion by the state to strike two counts on a claim that because the notice to the State Claims Commissioner and their allowing us to sue did not specifically contain those counts, that we were included for bringing those up at the Superior Court level. They're wrong. We've filed briefs indicating that they're wrong. They're still pursuing it. I'm optimistic that will be successful. Even if we're not, we still have the underlying claim, which is we provided a service to the state of Connecticut and we paid for it. So, but that's the update on that. On the tunnel, we have our mediation, we still call this mediation week. We met today with Scott and our attorneys on our presentation. Been meeting over six, eight weeks now, since it's been scheduled. We have an informal meeting tomorrow with the mediator. Both sides have an opportunity to share their case with the mediator, independent of the other side being present. Their session was last week, that's KJV, their session was last week, our session is tomorrow. We begin the actual mediation on Wednesday. We've reserved two days, Wednesday and Thursday of this week for the mediation. I have, we've put a lot of work into it, we will put a lot of work into it for the next few days. That being said, the mediator we have is a very learned mediator. He used to be, all he did was construction law before we went to mediation. He's well-respected, both sides have used him before. Example, he was a mediator in a case with our lawyer, Attorney Corey, in a case that involved 12 defendants, four plaintiffs, and a whole myriad of issues. And in the two-day mediation, they were resolved every one of those issues to everyone's satisfaction. So we're cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to work similar magic this week. And I'll certainly be able to report, not just that, we won't wait until November. We'll report to you by email after mediation to tell you how we've handled that.
Mediation is if both parties have to agree. There's nothing binding other.
Number one, and number two, both parties have to agree on a resolution. It's not like binding arbitration. So, and that's my report. I don't have any questions.
Other question?
Commissioner Bush. I think so, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, I don't know if how relevant it is, but just for informational purposes. As we do the, participate in the abandonment of the Culver Reservoir, will we have any ability to impact or discuss or affect in any way the level of the water in the Farmington River going forward?
We are, we are an active member in those discussions, they continue. Of the state, we've been working with her office to get holders together to have those discussions. We call it regime flow, others want to call something. We handle discharge of water from the Culver Reservoir to a lot of different constituencies, some of which have competing interests, right? So you've got the fishermen, you've got the recreational people, you've got the repairing rights downstream. You've got the habitat, the viability of the Farmington River itself. So a lot of different interests, but we, for years, the MDC, through the work of their staff and President Timothy of that party of the state, have been able to navigate, so to speak, through that phase of competing interest, and quite successfully, quite effectively. That's going to change because our role is not gone, but the minute, what we have left is the 3.5 billion gallons of water at the Bottom Lake Reservoir, which is a remnant from the building of the reservoir in the first place, where they cut off that supply from the West Branch Reservoir. But the talks are ongoing, they've been, so we've met with Scott, I met with Chris Leck, met with the first select people of the towns affected several times on the issue. We hope to have some resolution. The key player in all that is going to be the Army Corps, as they've always been. And sometimes they've been an active player, and most times they've allowed us to, you know, whatever we did, and they would sign off. But now they're going to be the ones to make the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10, referral of 2024 budget to the Board of Finance. Recommended action referred to the Board of Finance is your motion.
Who?
To move and second it to refer the operating budget for 2024 to the Board of Finance is your discussion. If not, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 11, Personal Pension Insurance Committee, consideration and potential action regarding June 10th, June 10th approval as an official MDC holiday. Commissioner.
Commissioner Taylor, the chairman of PP&amp;I. This matter was discussed at PP&amp;I. It was thought that since it involved matters with regards to union labor relationships, that it would be appropriate to refer this matter to the board. There was no objection to the holiday, although we did not take whatever characterized as an official vote supporting it.
I guess there was some question over the economic cost of it. I thought it would be much higher, but it's what, $20,000?
Twenty thousand.
$20,900, $20,000. I guess what makes some sense, though, to get some context to this, to refer it back to the Board of Finance with the budget, because it's going to have to be included in the budget.
Well, let me, let me. Well, I think at this point, it's $20,000. And if you look at the river towns in the MDC, Hartford, West Hartford, Newman Field, Rockin Hill, and also the state of Connecticut, basically, that's an official holiday. And if we supported the notion of having June 10th as an official holiday, that would move us to 14 official days. That would bring us in line with West Hartford, Hartford, and.
Wethersfield?
Wethersfield, yeah. So I think that the cost is to benefits. And I would strongly recommend to this board that we approve it and then basically, within that context, a discussion be held with the unions as to what their reaction.
Yeah, if I may, Scott Jolson, CEO of MDC. So we had brought this to PP&amp;I multiple times this past year. During our negotiations with the union, which we just finalized, obviously, the union is supportive of the holiday. MDC, myself, staff is supportive of the holiday. The question really becomes, you know, is the board supportive of adding the holiday? Or is the board supportive of removing in kind a holiday? Obviously, the board, I'm sorry, the union is not willing to lose a holiday. They're willing to accept the add of the holiday, but they're not interested in losing the holiday. It was part of our union discussions, but we just didn't have an answer at the time. So I would, I would believe that if the board sort of chose to add the holiday, they would be very happy to accept that.
Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask Jamie if she could answer a little bit. I'm just looking at the spreadsheet that the commissioners were given. And it says that, you know, everything seems to kind of be in line, give or take a day or two comparatively, except for the fact that we offer 10 personal days, and that seems a little bit higher than most of the other municipalities that we have. So I'm just wondering if you can, if Jamie might be able to comment on that a little bit.
Sure. The 10 personal days is actually only for exempted excluded employees who are above a salary of 13. And that's because they don't get earn days. So I don't know, six earn days is indicated below that. The unions get earn days, and then the exempted excluded employees can be lower than 13. So it's not, you know, this list of MDC time off is not necessarily a one-size-fits-all. A lot of this is driven on which union are you a part of, and then are you exempted, excluded, and above a certain grade or below. So there is some variability within this, like the union does not get inclement weather days, for example. So again, this was kind of simply a breakdown of these are the time off periods that district employees may get, but it's not, no one group gets every single one of these benefits.
And then if I could just want to.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, thank you very much. During my time with the state, like I couldn't touch stuff like this without going through union negotiation. This was just, you don't touch anything. And it's all a negotiable deal. So while I'm in favor of, you know, the holiday, I really think that this has to be within the union negotiating process. I just think it's cleaner that way. I'm not picking on this holiday, I just think that anything that we do in this way has to go through the negotiating process, because we don't know what else to come down the pipe that we're asked to be able to do and consider on this level. So I really think we need to push it back and put it into the union contract negotiations.
I can space that a little bit. Scott's earlier point, we have talked about this at length with the unions during the negotiation process recently. And they, we just didn't get anywhere on it because they weren't willing to give something up. It is something, I have very regular meetings with all three of the unions. All three of them have brought this up to me since we've negotiated, said, hey, any update on June? So I have actually talked extensively with all of them, let them know I'm bringing it to PP&amp;I, I'm bringing it to the board. They are fine if we want to, if the board decides, hey, we're going to grant this outside of the negotiations, they are fine. The issue is going to come into play is if the board decides that we're not just going to give a day, you want something for it. At that point, 100%, we do have to take that back to negotiations. But they will all gladly accept the additional day if that's the board chose.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For purposes of further discussion, I would move that we approve adding to the teams for the holidays the intention on the union approving and agreeing with that.
Second. Is that a motion that you made?
Yeah.
For seconds.
That's discussion. We finished discussion.
Well, we still have to, we still have to pass a motion.
Apparently not pass a motion. It's in order. Discussion.
I just think that all the discussion we've had about union participation is correct. We put back on the table for their discussion consideration and votes. All I'm doing is getting it out there to save, coming back around full circle again by suggesting to make a motion that we approve the budget on that. So when Jamie goes back and assuming that it will be approved by the union, it doesn't have to come back once again.
Well, it will come back the other time.
Well, yeah.
The main motion under the budget. Commissioner.
Commissioner Gray. Isn't 14 days at some point? I have no problem with holiday, but the rest of the world doesn't think it's 14 days. I understand the state and towns do, but 14 days, most towns, people get six or seven or eight days. And I would suggest, why don't we give them the 14 days and let them pick 12 or 13? You give a list of 14 days, say, these are the 14 days you could take, you got to take 12. Anyone that we stay with the days we have, it gives them flexibility to take that particular day. I'm just saying, the ratepayers in my town, other than the people that work for the state, are not getting those many days. That, this isn't fair, at some point, 14 is a lot. That's three weeks of vacation days. On top of vacations, people don't get that, unless they guys get it, but that's not normal people. People get six, seven, or eight holidays, and I was going, again, I don't want to take any away, but just give an option to pick up that day or something else, and I think that'd be fine. I mean, that makes sense to me, not cheating anybody. You know, say, here's a list of 14, you got to take 13, and we're at right now. Do me that.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just point out that the town of Wethersfield has 14 days and it is not included in June. So.
I think also the town that can allow you to go out all the way. Eight days, so I'm just saying, and I don't care what the town does, I'm just saying, at some point, 14 is enough. But next year, we'll go 15.
Yeah, just have a question, how does the extra holiday impact the day-to-day operations?
We will, you're the board's chief executive officer.
So as we've said, we're supportive of the holiday. We, as Jamie mentioned, we've talked about this with the unions. They are more than willing to accept the holiday, they're not willing to give anything up. So I just want to clarify, Commissioner Curry, that you're suggesting that we add the holiday is what you're suggesting and not request anything in return. So, is that, is that your, is that your?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting or implying how you should do your work in terms of negotiation. But the Barney Union, I'm only, my motion was that it goes back to the Barney Union for consideration. What you put on the table as part of that, it makes, I would leave up to you and District Council. I only want not to have to chase our tail again. And everybody can come to an agreement, it doesn't have to go back through this board in some new motion.
And I'm happy with that. I would just offer that we have spent almost two years negotiating with the unions. And we had, as you know, we had changes in union leadership twice in two different unions during negotiations. And we just had new, we just literally had new leadership in two of the other unions. So I, I mean, we can do whatever the board would request, but I just think that we were wasting a lot of staff time trying to negotiate something that they already said, the board, the union was very clear, we're not giving up any holiday for another holiday. To the point. To the point, Commissioner Gray, I agree with you in some sense, but, but it would be a nightmare for, it's one thing if, you know, if you have an individual that decides to take these 13 versus those 13. But when you have the way in which the MDC operates, which is, you know, crews, you need six people on a crew, and when you, people are taking different days, all of a sudden you wind up with, you know, really try and herd cats, right? So it's, it's a challenge. I would, this is what I would offer, I would offer you this, is that I think in the spirit of $20,000, I think we should, I would recommend that you approve the holiday in addition to, and then the next union negotiation, we can revisit it. But I don't think we're going to be successful, and I think it's going to be an awful lot of work in meetings with staff and unions to try and negotiate one holiday based on, based on what we've already seen and heard from them. I think it's, it's, it's 20,000 bucks. It's, it's not a lot of money. It sends a message, the MDC is considering of the holiday, and I think that's what we should do. But again, it's up to you. We just want to know what the rules are when we get started here.
Okay, that's going to be contract. Okay, Commissioner Torres.
Commissioner Torres. This is another example of initial process, and it's getting us into trouble because the process is off. The negotiations have taken place, contracts have been signed, holidays have been established. So really, this is a matter of whether or not this group of people here decides, yeah, we'll reap the 20,000, buy the holiday, then maybe down the road, there could be some negotiations in terms of, you know, whether or not there's some PTO that can be swapped, swap to this or some other thing. But I think that, you know, we've already got the cart in front of the horse here, and it's a little bit difficult to, you know, to try to correct something which we really can't contract you at this point. My experience with unions, it ain't going to fly. And I'm going to give anything back. The contract is signed, then you don't give, you don't give things back unless you get something else in return, right? So it's a strategic thing. Getting back to the, to the, the real meaning of what we're going to do here, okay? And I know that there are some monetary considerations within scope of things, the $20,000 doesn't seem to need to be that much of an issue. The issue of operations is not impacted in a way that would create problems for the agency. But it also, I think, is an important message that the MDC sends to its communities. We are thoughtful people. We care about our customers. We care about our clients. This recognizes also among our own staff, those people that are personally impacted by this day of enlightenment, if you will, that, that we care enough to say, you know what? A great law was done for 100 years, and we want to celebrate the fact that this is all over, and we, as an organization, are committed to things like diversity, recognizing all our people, and that this particular day is a day that, irrespective of whether or not we negotiated with the union, we feel it's the right thing to do. And if there is no substantial impact, negative impact to the organization, then I think in the big picture, it is a good thing to do. However, you know, getting back to initial process, you know, this should not happen. None of these things that have financial impact or have contractual issue to it should be discussed here, you know, as opposed to be negotiated at the table with the unions. Also, I'm very displeased with the fact that it's still after the fact. I wish it would have gone before, but as we said, I think we should go forward with this for the reason that I have to stop.
Further discussion.
Mr. Chair, can you just explain then what we're voting? I just want to make sure I'm voting right in the Commissioner Curry's resolution.
Resolution is to approve the date, excuse me, with the holiday included in the budget. It's a $20,000 allocation that will appear in the budget.
Do you want me to? That's not the main motion. This motion. I, I have it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Curry.
I'm sorry, it's going to go back to the union. The proposed motion.
To add June 10 to the holiday schedule contingent upon approval by the unions. That's correct.
We still have that part of the process that.
So that will be part of.
Talked about. We're happy. We can't unilaterally just approve a holiday even if the union wants it without their participation.
We're happy with that. Okay, so we will approve that. It will then go back with the budget until, and we won't take action in the budget until the union approves it.
Well, we'll figure out how to cover $20,000. I know, we'll figure it out.
I almost had a figure it out one.
But yes, we're happy to do that, and we will bring it to the, as Commissioner Curry requested, we'd get there, all three unions. Obviously, the E and Es do not vote, and they don't have the, unfortunately, the E and Es, we typically give the E and Es whatever we give the unions, and that's why the.
The unions say no.
But, but we will, I'm sure they will say yes, but we will, to follow that process, as Commissioner Curry outlined, we will do that.
And Mr. Chair.
Does anybody understand what we're doing now? Anybody want?
Commissioner Mandeide. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to reiterate, we as a board are now involving ourselves in union contract negotiation by approving something like this. I just wanted to make it clear that we're stepping in line right now by approving this in our process. We have a process that was extremely well done this last time, where I saw both the MDC and our employees, our unionized employees, went to the table and had a fantastic negotiation, cordial, and I was so impressed with the work that was done. I think we're stepping over our bounds, and we have to look at where does this stop? Where do we as a board stop with influencing what has already been negotiated with our unions? Because this is just the first step of us potentially, as a board, negotiating union contracts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman. Hold on. Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Mandeide.
First of all, I find this call is rather interesting because the whole purpose, the reason behind PPI and I referring this back to the board was that we viewed this basically as a matter that fell within the purview of labor management relationships. Consequently, it was appropriate to send it back to the board. Secondly, I respectfully remind my commissioner, fellow commissioner, that at one time, MDC commissioners were participants in the, participants in the labor union negotiations. And if you do not believe that.
They were, they were completely, they were fully negotiated, contracted, left through the staff. It changed about 23 or four years, spent the 25 years. Further discussion? Commissioner. I'm sorry. How to be.
I guess some history is history, and we're now 2003, and the negotiation is with Chief Executive Officer, if you will, and his team. So what we're doing here, I don't know about crossing the line, I think what we're, I think what we're saying here, what we're saying is that, yes, Scott agrees that they should have it, but I'm assuming we're giving you, with this, if we prove this, because without this, I'm going to say no, that it's in your bag of tricks, and you're, you're going to use that, you're going to try to get something for that day. You're just not going to give it to them?
If I may, if I may, I promise you, I promise you, I and my staff will spend more than $20,000 trying to negotiate this. We've already been there, done that. We, we spent two years negotiating, this was on our items for all of the unions, like I said. It is timing, I appreciate Commissioner Mandeide's points, but it is a timing issue, and the reality is, is that we will spend more money. I mean, most of our meetings with the unions, you know, we're talking about, you know, four hours or more every time we meet. And so we will easily spend $20,000 trying to negotiate something. My recommendation is, we, as Commissioner Torres says, we recognize the importance of this holiday. It would have been nice to have it in the union negotiations, but we couldn't get there with the unions. It just, it wasn't going to go anywhere in terms of negotiating something for it. And the recommendation from PPI, bring it to the full board, and our recommendation from staff is, we, we give this day to the employees. And then, in the next union contract, we will, we will talk about that and negotiate something, but it's, it's not worth the time and energy to try and negotiate something for it because we're not going to get anywhere.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yeah, I was supporting the original.
I don't think we need to send it back. It's, it's an exercise in what, you know, to, to send it to them. I think it's a wrong thing to do. I think that it's a decision that we make as commissioners, whether or not we believe this is a good thing to do, it's a good holiday, it's important to do, you know, and then, and then down the road, we're happy, as we do our negotiations, you know, the mailman appear again, maybe here for the long term, you know, something else may change. But I don't, you know, I don't see, I don't see why we need to send it back to the unions to, it seems like it's also a renegotiation of sorts, which is not. I think it's a decision the board makes. We make a decision. You know, do we think this is important? Do we think it's worth $20,000? Do we want to waste administration's time going back to the unions and doing stuff which is, you know, an exercise in what? I think we should just approve it and go and move forward. I don't see a need to do this, technically, to back it back to the unions to get the approval. It's a, that seems to me like to be a negotiate, a contractual, a renegotiate, you know, the contract all over again. That's what it's supposed to be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kristo, District Council, and as strange as it may sound, taking this back to the unions is a benefit, unilateral benefit to the unions as an exercise in fertility. You just, we have to recognize that this, our relationship with these three unions is a collective bargaining relationship, and that would stand in fact that it's a benefit and not a burden, and that we're not asking for any burden to accompany the benefit to the union membership. I think formalizing, it's not going to be a long process to formalize where they already are, and that is in a written sign up on this change. Let the process take, take place. It's not going to take long. It's not going to be a negotiation back and forth, but it preserves the collective bargaining nature of our relationship with those groups. So my recommendation is, notwithstanding how it's, it's counterintuitive, right? Why would they object to a benefit? It's part of the process. And not a long process.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Mr. Chairman? Yep. Hello? Commissioner Solari. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I should have said my name. I just want to say that I appreciate Commissioner Torres's comments, and I agree with him. It sounds like what we're saying is, if we believe this is the right thing to do, then we should do it, so. Thank you, Commissioner Torres, for that, too. Is there further discussion? You have time? Polls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
No, I'm just saying. Noes? Just saying.
Yeah, if I could confirm, this is John Merle. I have Commissioners Mandeide, Evan Gray, and I think it's known.
Item 12. Water Bureau consideration and potential action regarding potential purchase of real estate in New Hartford. Is this not ready? Just very briefly, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Kristo. Thank you. Kristo, District Council, no action was taken by the Water Bureau.
There's nothing for this board to act upon or for the recommendation to act upon. It's merely a case, there's 207 acres in Hartford, that's on the market. I hear, oh, I'm reading three, I'm sorry. Acres on the market in Hartford in Springer Resort. We have an interest in it. We've got it, had it appraised, or finishing up the appraisal, and we're talking to the seller. At such time, if we should have a draft or proposed, then we'll come back, go back to the Water Bureau and ultimately this board to consider. It's too early.
Commissioner Torres.
If you look at, do we exercise our nonprofit status? Do we have to pay taxes on the property as we Google property? Pay taxes, 112-75 or 76 of the statute, we pay taxes. As if this property were improved farm land, which is a fiction, right? Because it's open space, and we've had arguments with town, with the non-member towns up in the northwest corner about what is the true value of this property? The legislature determine that its value is as if it were improved farm land. That's, that would be the basis for which we pay taxes. It's not exempt. So is that the same thing? We acquire property in West Hartford, in, in Hartford? No, only in, in Hartford. It only, it only. Water show. Under pressure, water show, by statute.
Opportunity for general public comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Judy Allen.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Torres.
Thank you. Judy Allen, West Hartford. I just quickly want to add something to what Scott said about the difficulty in meeting some of the minority and Hartford resident people to do the work in the north part of Hartford. And I'm just wondering, and I'm hopeful that that will, that you can be, I'm not speaking my accent, that, that the information Commissioner Taylor has about possibilities within Hartford is going to be useful in, in helping you to meet those quotas. Thank you.
Further, further comment to the general public? If not, Commissioners requesting for future agenda items. Commissioner Bush.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Bush. At some point, I think there has to be a discussion about the stormwater situation that continues to plague Bloom Brook Road. Over the last weekend, when we had the heavy rain, there was two small fountains discharging from the sewer, the manholes from the sewer. That sewer, that main line is 23 feet below the, the surface of the road, and there was two, at least, I mean, more than two, just two that were directly outside where I live that were clearly visible. I did not walk around to the five or six locations. So I'd like to have that, you know, continue to be addressed, and I think what needs to be done specifically is, is that there are approximately, from what I understand, 700 homes that, that discharge into that one main trunk. And I think that we need to have some, some outreach to those homes to continue the removal with the, with the backwater valves and the sun pumps. I've done three of those, and I've had them done. They work extremely well. They, they remove an enormous amount of water from the Sanat-
They, they remove an enormous amount of water from the sanitary sewer. It's just nonstop, assuming that the homes that have that, those, those devices installed have the appropriate place to discharge. I'm, I'm bringing a few different things into this, into this statement, but the backwater valve program is a very successful program. It works very well to remove stormwater from the sanitary sewer, as long as that water's being discharged into a safe location, because it, it could create additional burdens to neighbors and other things. But, but I would like to, to make sure that that, that gets, that stays on the, on the agenda and is discussed. North of Hartford is not the only place that has flooding when it's heavy rain. My neighbors, I went to all of my neighbors, and I have many wet basements and many discharges back into...
Remember, you don't matter with storms.
Oh, no, no, I get it, no, I get it. And also, just to follow up with that, one of, my entire existence on this board is due to the, the failures of the West Hartford Storm Sword. I'm a huge advocate that West Hartford needs to step up and do their job to protect basements and, and the truck rug from, from sewage discharging into basements and rivers and streets. So that's, I mean, that's, that's kind of who I am here. So I totally agree with that.
Just, just for a question of Scott, because of the agenda. I now, I see now that the United States Congress is seriously considering flooding as an option, that they're talking about adding 40 or 50 billion dollars to the existing legislation that they're passing now, and understand that stormwater is the problem, and maybe, because maybe they'll come back to where they were in 1977 when they allowed us to receive federal support based on the same formula that the highway funding is done. 80% federal, 20% local. In 1977, the federal government got out of the stormwater or, or sewer business and has not subsidized in the same way. If they move in that direction, it'll be a major benefit for where we are, because we need millions and hundreds of millions of dollars to deal with that in our own operations. That's a positive, hopefully a positive, we should start something to deal with the national infrastructure. You know, we don't see sewer fires. We do see highways as a result. There, it was in 1977. I don't worry about it, everything's going well. And it's 50 years later, and it's not going well. The environment's going the other way. So, just...
Thank you.
And those are problems that we're going to have to, you know, West Hartford, New Leighton, Wethersfield, because much of that is causing the problem for North, North Hartford and South Park. Okay, without any further discussion, the appropriate motion is in. Not objection at all.